And it went on, and it went on. And I mean, Mary Shewy was just, what is this?
The time on the wall is 5:00. I'd like to welcome you all to the special study session.
Rescheduled.
Rescheduled regular study session. Carla, would you like to please call order?
Mark Arnold.
Here.
Whitney Hall.
Here.
Marvin Cusick. Eddie Mack.
David Mason.
Here.
Irene.
Here.
John Roberts.
Here.
James Semenek.
David Trojan.
Jonathan Waddell.
Here.
There we go.
Okay, so we shall discuss some further proposed sidewalk ordinances and revisions. We have some notes here about what we discussed previously. Any other comments from staff or from anybody here shaded?
I believe we discussed having a map available to look. Do we have something we could...
Erin has that for you.
Very good.
Any comments on the notes? Okay, thank you.
Sit back and watch the movie.
Thank you. This is the oral city map. I just want to give you heads up like, give you layer by layer what we are looking at. So...
It's hard to see. I'm gonna try to darken the room a little bit to see.
Man.
Give me one minute.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yes.
Still a little washed up.
I think they're working on it. I think they're loading it up. Some popcorn.
How you do it though? No, I wanted to make that light, so...
Did you do that on purpose?
Yes.
He's gonna add.
So this is the light gray where the total city of Enid master trail system. And this is the bike trail, what we got so far built in. And these are all the trails that currently built. The red represents the existing trail. The purple is under construction and the green are under design right now. And these are the red ones. They are all built so far. So this yellow is also already under design. I mean, designed complete. So these are all the current trail systems what we have. And these are all the parkings along the trails where we are. And this is the Meadow Lake Park. And this is the Cleveland, where the trailhead is located. And this is the Don Hoskins Park. And you see blue and orange dots. The blue dots are variance approved so far. And orange dots are variance denied for the sidewalks.
So on those blue dots, excuse me, is that just on one piece of property?
That's exactly right. Yeah. Each blue dot represents, I can zoom into one like right here. So this is the one on the 30th Street, the last time they approved the variance on it. That's cool. And here, we have all these sidewalks that were built. The red is a part of the ADA sidewalk improvement projects that every year, city puts about $300,000 to build it. So this is each school. This is Adam's School. And this is the Waller School. And this is the one on 10th Street, 10th and Broadway.
Longfellow.
So those are all the schools. And if I zoom in tighter, and you can see all these green, they were part of the sidewalk partnership program that were done. This is another ADA $300,000 work. So, I mean, to put it in like smaller maps, it takes, there is a lot of data here. So we tried to put in a big map so you can zoom in and out. And these are all the sidewalks that were done part of the ordinance, the purple. So these are all sidewalks that were built after 2014, whenever the sidewalk ordinance came into effect, 2014.
Whenever that was. When was that, Carol?
Well, 2000, there was some sidewalk stuff going back to 2009. That's when we started with the $300,000.
Okay. But these purple sidewalks were started like, we put all 2014 ones. There is a lot of sidewalks and stuff like that. And we put it like kind of dots wherever all this was built. Instead of, these are all the built sidewalks part of ordinance. That was after 2014.
I would say that the sidewalks in Pheasant Run were already planned prior to that. So they were done afterwards, but they were not done because of the ordinance. They were done because that's, the developer put that in there.
Okay. I think like, what I mean, like they were built after 2014, I'm just saying.
Right, okay.
It was mandated that it be done.
Right. I'm sorry.
After 2014. It was done, once it was mandated that it was done regardless of they would, whether they were done it...
It was mandated in the plat, in the final plat as part of the developer's requirements. When you build a house there, you build your perretto, sheriff's sidewalks. So that's just something that was done prior to the ordinance saying you will or you won't. At least in Pheasant Run. I can't speak for any other area on that, so...
So these are all the information. We went back.
So, we've got the map. I think, I think...
You're kind of impressed in terms of worldwide.
Too mixed on the, in this whole process. I think we've kind of established, you know, the notes here. Is everybody, does everybody in agreement in terms of what these notes here, what in terms of priority and the where and the who and the when funding options? I mean, is there any, pardon, anybody has any objection to what's on there? Any additions in terms of, you know, the funding, the funding options here? I would have thought that we had some discussion in terms of what we wanted to do in terms of funding. I mean, I'm okay with it, but...
I think this is what we discussed as far as how far we made it last time. But that was kind of also where we left off. So there definitely is a hole as for, you know, I think we should continue to encourage the city to be doing some of the work that is just not feasible for...
Sure.
...owners themselves. And then we would have to flush out what a sidewalk fee, what we're meaning by that if we're gonna recommend that to the commission.
Well, I think we need to be able to give, obviously, we're not going to write that.
Right.
Carol's gonna write that. And so I think obviously she needs some guidance from us. And then we can come back and when Carol has had time to set that forth in a legal fashion...
Gotcha.
Then I think we can come back and look at it again and make our final tweaks, so...
So I guess I'm trying to figure out, okay, so what do we want to discuss next? Because we're kind of hanging right now.
I know one thing I would like to discuss is having the site plan process and the sidewalk ordinance work in conjunction instead of opposition to one another. I think that would have eliminated half of the variances we've probably had to look at, so... If just those two things were working in conjunction with one another, so...
Any feedback from you in terms of...
Yeah, clarify that, please, Commissioner Cole. In the site plan ordinance, everybody has to do a site plan. Unless what you're adding is 5,000 square feet or less, or you're adding less than one-third of what's there, then you don't have to. Is that what you're talking about?
That's one of the...
Because in the sidewalk ordinance, if you do an addition regardless of the size, you have to do a sidewalk. So I think that's what you're saying if the, that could, those exceptions be brought in?
Yeah, and that's where I'm getting with that, I think.
Okay.
A little tiny add-ons that we all kind of shake our heads over or remodel where we're not raising a structure and building something new. I think if our sidewalk ordinance would go along with our site plan process, I think if they worked in harmony, I think that would eliminate some of the problems.
If you do that, then you would not have, Swadleys would not have done a sidewalk. Does that make sense? Because it was like 200 square foot addition.
Let you go back to B, percentage of the project cost.
Well, that's it. We're just trying to talk about site plan for a minute.
Right, okay.
And remember the nightclub at 30th and Chestnut? That was an 80 square foot addition. That wouldn't have required one. So I'm just giving you some examples. If you line it up with the site plan ordinance, if the addition is less than 5,000 square feet or less than one-third, so let me give you a couple of examples. Let's say you just have a 50,000 square foot building. And you do a 5,000 square foot addition, that's certainly less than one-third, but it's over five, so it triggers a site plan. Let's say you had a 3,000 square foot building and your addition was 1,200. It exceeds the one-third. Does that make sense? So what that ordinance is saying is we want to look at site plans where substance is happening, not where small things are happening. And it gives two exceptions. So sometimes when we tell people, well, you have to do a site plan because your addition is greater than one-third, and they go, well, but it's less than 5,000. Well, in the ordinance, it's either one or the other. So there's two triggers in there. Have I hopefully made that clear? So if that's the direction the planning commission wants legal to go in the ordinance, that's what that would mean.
Another example would be Enid Marble and Tile where they were adding basically a compressor, a piece of equipment.
It was an 800 square foot addition.
Square foot. And they wanted sidewalks that would exceed the cost of the equipment and the add-on by a few thousand dollars. And so that, that is one. By having that match one another, we eliminate some of those little small gotchas like that. But maybe not eliminate altogether if you have the variance work in conjunction with the total project cost. So nobody gets off the hook completely.
Well, so it'd either be like you were saying on the size or a dollar figure.
Right.
If it exceeds a certain dollar figure, then it would trigger it.
In regard to, in regard to the site plan process, it is determined by size. Determining by cost is all... Yeah, but, yeah. Go back to Swadleys. I mean, you can't base it off size because what we're going to run into though, what we're going to run into is when we have, and let's take Curt Wright Honda as a prime example. Kevin Curt Wright did not want to go in and have to remodel his dealership. It's not going to help him sell Hondas. But Honda says if you want to keep selling Hondas in Enid, you will make it look like every other Honda dealership in the United States. And so he had to spend a lot of money. It's still the same dealership. It's still the same owner. We're still not changing a use. So what happens is, is when we start adding things, we're going to wind up with some vacancies. Now, obviously, he's forced to or not. But when we have, let's say Route 21 vacant space at Oakwood and Gharriett, if we need to go in there and spend $100,000 of tenant improvement, and then we have to build a sidewalk all the way around that, it may behoove that developer to leave that space empty. What we don't want is blight. We don't want vacant Pizza Hut setting around. We don't want to have to put in sidewalks when franchises are telling franchisees, it's time for you to do your five-year remodel, and so on and so forth. With the Swadleys, we're still a restaurant. The main structure is still the same. Same way with El Chico de Lanra and the same way with El Patio from the Chinese buffet that was there. So, and like I said, Curt Wright Honda is still the same, it's still the same business.
So what do you recommend the mechanism in order to be able to make our commercial districts more walkable then? Because I don't see, I don't see a pathway to get there if the option is always on the business of whether or not they want to pay the cost in order to...
Well, I think if... If they made the sidewalk ordinance altogether, so... I think, I think if, if it's, if the city of Enid's desire is to make that two-mile stretch of Gharriett walkable, they need to be the ones to do it, not the, not the private sector.
I think going back to your point, if we have a price trigger in the site plan and in sidewalk ordinance, that still leaves them the option of coming to us and asking for variance and saying, hey, look, I'm just doing this minor upgrade that is forced on me by corporate. Can you give me that waiver because I don't have that money as a franchisee? Or is it something where we're starting out and we have guns a-blazing? You know, there's going to be differences.
Well, the thing we haven't talked about is the dollar amount and, you know, I mean, is it going to be a price per foot basis? Is it going to be a percentage of the building? I think you gotta base it on both. Because, you know, if you are doing the Route 21, to make them put a sidewalk all the way across the entire property, that's not, I don't think that's anybody's intent. But if you're gonna spend $100,000, make it be 1%, 2% of their permit goes towards the sidewalk fund. That doesn't pay for the whole sidewalk, but it has some money going into the fund to get it done by the city. But the, and the problem with that is though, you and Whitney and I, we own three buildings along Gharriett. Whitney wants to make improvements. She pays her sidewalk fee or whatever in lieu of. Five years, 10 years from now, ODOT comes in, re-does Gharriett. They redo our sidewalks for free. How is that fair to her?
But she paid, here's the thing I kind of learned last time. She might have paid her fee, she still never got a sidewalk. And I don't like that. For some reason, that's just odd.
And I think of Ronnie Valdez when he put in that car wash on Gharriett, 15, 1600 block there. He paid a percentage in for a turn lane. This has been several years ago prior to most of us being here. ODOT came in and did a turn lane at some point, that fifth lane in the center there. He paid for that. None of the neighbors ever did. And his never, his money never went anywhere. So how is that fair to him versus everybody else that benefited?
If we derail the program based on the premise that the possibility that ODOT is going to come in and basically repave and sidewalk every aspect of this commercial area, then, you know, we might as well chuck the whole thing. It's just not, it's not realistic. But the onus at this point, what we're saying is, is that we're gonna shift the onus of making commercial areas whose primary, primary function is to generate revenue. We're gonna shift the onus from the business owners who generate revenue from those businesses onto the community as a whole in order to be able to pave, to sidewalk those particular areas. When the city itself is already paying at a minimum $300,000 a year in order to be able to sidewalk areas in this community, I don't know if that's an equitable trade-off at this, at this point.
Well, perhaps, perhaps that needs to be the next main target for that $300,000 in improvement is that two-mile stretch on Gharriett.
Well, in terms of priority at this particular point, I don't know if you're on here, priority has been sidewalking schools that commercial areas will never have any involvement in. And areas where, that ADA is most important for those who, you know, definitely aren't going to be in a position in order to be able to do this themselves. And so if we're looking at, okay, in levels of priority, all right, you know, the city's gonna try and make sure that every school, every area that's like that and serves, serves a, you know, the disabled community gets the priority. And then we're looking at this commercial area and to say, hey, look, we need to make this area also accessible. I don't think it's too much of an ask for the commercial, the commercial sector to have a, put in a share beyond what the regular citizens and what the citizens are paying in to be able to get it done. That's just my personal opinion on that.
Then the only fair way to do it would be just to do an assessment for everybody along there and just force it on them. I mean, really. Well, if it's an area that's priority, then assessing, there's gotta be multiple tiers to this.
And I definitely agree. Again, assessing the area and say what our priorities are and laying out, this is number one priority, this is two priority. And if, and I understand where you're coming from in terms of paying into the pot and not necessarily getting a sidewalk. That would prick me. But in this juncture, there's nothing precluding anybody at this point to be able to just pay to get the sidewalk done. And so for me, if you were, if that was your fear that you would pay into that pot and not get the sidewalk done, you could simply just pay to get the, get, pay and have the sidewalk finished at that point. So I, for me, I'm trying to figure out how to navigate. I think we're trying to find ways in not, to not get it done as opposed to figuring out what we can do in order to be able to make this happen. Because I can tell you the will of the, of the commission at this particular point is to, is to make these commercial areas walkable. So we've got to figure out, and if it's, if it's putting, because it sounds like what you're talking about is putting just a flat tax across the board for everybody in that area that we zone out to, and to generate revenue from.
Well, simple is never fair. You know, it always has to become more complicated. One of the things we've never discussed is, you know, recognizing that really where the issue comes into play is, sure, you have paid a certain percentage of your property value, or, you know, there's these extra issues like the drainage in front of Swadleys. At a certain point, would it not behoove us to say, look, if you're willing to put in your cost up to either the percentage of the building or what have you, see if the city can come in and do some matching, especially if there are additional concerns like drainage or what have you. Or say, look, we know, I mean, ODOT publishes what their list is gonna be. And that goes out far enough that we should be able to tell, okay, your business, we're gonna have sidewalks come in the next three years. But yours, that's gonna be a decade. So you might as well put in the sidewalk because it's probably gonna need to be fixed between now and then anyway.
Sure.
So that might be a way to bridge the gap and make it less onerous on the business owner, but still allow the community to benefit.
But I think if this, if the ordinance requires a sidewalk, then the city's gonna have to participate in fixing the engineering. Because I can't just go in and say, hey, Joe, throw a tin horn in there.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna have to go see Mr. Cotta before I go do anything.
Right.
I wanna have my, I'm gonna have my engineer go talk to him. And there's gonna have to be some work done. So I think it has to be paramount that if there is a requirement for extra engineering, the city's gonna have to do that. Because we just can't go willy-nilly out there and mess with the city's drainage.
Right.
And there is a lot of problems. Because that road was not ever designed to have sidewalks, and that's part of the problem.
I guess where you go simple like David was suggesting and just hit everybody that's got a water bill. Anybody that uses water has paid into the sidewalk. And you may never get a water, or may never get a sidewalk in front of your property, but you paid for sidewalks as needed, as priority throughout the community.
And when I suggested that last month, there was some pushback on, well, some people have trouble paying their utility bills now, and I do understand that. But we could easily set that up on a user fee. You know, the person that uses less than X amount of gallons, just like it is now, would put in 25 cents. Whereas me, if I use four times water of everybody else, I have to put in four, $5 on top of my bill. I mean, that way it would make it friendly. It would make it equal to what they're using. And it would give us a pool of money then to actually place those walks. I don't think, I think part of the problem is we've not been able to hold the line without giving variances. I mean, we're sitting here, every one of us say we want sidewalks, but we give a variance every time they come up here.
Well, and that's where a lot of the small ones, a lot of the little 80-foot, 100-foot things, if we make that site plan process match the sidewalk ordinance, we eliminate a big portion of that. Because when you look at where some of those variances were given, they're all out in the hinterland. And I would also say we probably need to add industrial areas to agriculture areas is another place where we don't really need sidewalks.
Like I-3 is just an...
I-1, I-2, I-3, because, you know, have nothing against anybody with any type of mobility issues, but if DOT won't accept me as a driver because of my medical card, then I'm probably not walking to that industrial park anywhere, so...
In terms of the dollar amount, my concern is, is that you get situations, you know, Swadleys, fantastic, love the fact that they're coming here. But if we look at that project as a whole and the overall funding of that project, it far surpasses the $5,000 threshold in what it takes place. But if you take it and you break it up into 15 projects, now you can, now you can skirt the rule. And so this, this comes to how we're gonna, you know, the implementation of this, I don't know if we're gonna make it a window, a project, you know, a total amount of projects on this facility over a certain period of time or what the case may be. But, you know, just, you know, my caution is, is that, you know, finding these loopholes in order to be able to bypass because there's no intent of, you know, to put the sidewalk in as, overall is a problem. But I think if, if we can get back to the thought process that regardless of what the nature of your project is, that there now is a fee or whatever, whatever you want to implement, regardless of the size of your project, there's a percentage of your project that's going to go into the sidewalk fund. And then we can take and we can implement it based on priority in order to be able to get this finished. That's the only equitable way I can see about going about this. And if anybody has a problem with it in terms of timeframe in which they get their sidewalk, we can be very, very open and public in terms of with this, you know, with the map in which we do up, that these are the areas that are gonna get priority in terms of when the sidewalks are gonna go in. This is which your money's going towards, and this is the timeframe in which we project that your area's gonna get a sidewalk. That's the only equitable way I see it doing.
This was asked or answered last time, but say in the case of Swadleys, they, let's say they paid the fee.
Uh-huh.
And then two years from now, someone else buys it and refabricates the whole place, and that trigger would happen again.
Yes.
That fee preclude the property from being triggered again?
No, I would think that anytime you would do a project that, that hits the trigger, you put money into the pot in order to be able to do that. So regardless of whether you do 15 projects or you just do one massive project, the percentage should still be the same, is going to go to the sidewalk project. And if you do multiple projects to renovate your building, then you're gonna put multiple dips into the pot. To me, it would incentivize doing one large project as opposed to doing multiple small ones.
Like with my background, if you look at EPA regulations for air, for instance, if you're a major source, there's a three-year window that, you know, hey, you idled this unit, it's offline, it's permanent. You can take that savings and apply that to your new project as far as whether or not you've hit a trigger. But then going forward, you know, they're looking at, okay, did you do a couple of little things trying to get out of this? Or is this a modification that triggers a major change? So we might just need to specify, okay, if you pull the permit for anything related to your business within this window, then we're gonna keep track cumulatively and see where that gets you.
And then the permit wouldn't be issued until the fee was paid, right?
But then if it's based on permit fee, who establishes that that's, this is the fair evaluation of the amount that they're spending?
And in my experience with commercial real estate, anytime you make more fees and make things difficult, people make harder decisions. Just as the city of Enid is considering the dollar in regard to what they spend on sidewalks, the private industry is doing the same. And you lose competitiveness the more things you add on. And when you have company XYZ looking at five towns in the city, in the state of Oklahoma, and Enid's on the list, they're going to look at everything. Because everybody here knows that every company wants all of the freebies and the goodies that every company wants all of the freebies and the goodies they can get, and they'll go, it's just like we go to hotels based on our rewards cards and what we can get. And you can't blame anybody for wanting to get their best value. And I'm afraid, if we're doing a $7,000, $8,000 project, the cost of the sidewalk is such a small and ominous value that a sophisticated general contractor can probably get that thrown in for free. Whereas a small business owner trying to make a required repair, like a roof, have you put a roof on a big commercial building? And the 3, 500, I bet it would cost $5 million just to roof Oakwood Mall. Would you like to see a developer have to put a sidewalk all the way around Oakwood Mall and put a roof on it? They'd probably just scuttle that mall, and it would sit there, and it would become blight. And that's what I am worried about. When we're tearing down a building, and it's really not amusing, it's a possibility there's 600 dead and dying malls all over the country. These are things that we deal with on a daily basis. I don't want to gig somebody when we're doing, when we think their project is pricey, and so we think we should just hit them aside. There's got to be some kind of cutoff, there's got to be some kind of...
You make that same valuation in terms of the utilities, whether the piping, the electrical, and anything else that's big to that building. And so, if we begin to start thinking of the sidewalk in terms of the functional aspect of the building and how well it functions inside of our community, you look at it in the same terms as you would as a utility. And as you're making those valuations, as you look at a building, or whether you're going to purchase it or not, at that very same time, you say, well, it's going to cost me that much in order to be able to repair the electrical, is it worth it for me in order to be able to do that? That becomes part of the calculus. And so, I don't, I don't, there are going to be times where your funding isn't going to be able to cover everything that takes place with that, and that, it'll be what it is. But to steer completely away from sidewalks at this point, just simply because it becomes an extra cost for developers?
Well, I could definitely see where...
I have, I have, I have two projects that have died because a sidewalk blew the financing, and then their bankers didn't want to loan them money on a piece of public property. And so, it's not the people that are building 5 and 10 and 15 million dollar projects, it's the guys wanting to do $100,000 projects. It's the small business people
Sure.
that are being hurt. It's the people I talk to every day
That's where this helps, though.
that don't want to, you know, I'm buying a $100,000 office building, and I need to do a $100,000 remodel on it, and I'm struggling to try to figure out how to come up with that 20% down, and here comes a $15,000, $20,000, $30,000 sidewalk on top of that, that's where we run into the problem.
That's where this percentage is helping. It's not making you have to, like Northwestern, we just looked at...
But that's also, if we had the site plan process and the sidewalk ordinance match, that would take care of those small business people.
You're not asking, going this route, you're not asking them to put, you know, like Northwestern, a quarter million dollar worth of sidewalk in, you're saying it's a percentage based on what you're spending. So, now, if you've got to put a roof on it, it's a percentage based on what you're spending, not you have to put a sidewalk all the way around the mall and base it on that fee.
Well, and it would be something that you'd say, if you have an existing sidewalk, it's waived because you already have the sidewalk, or, you know...
There's not one around Oakwood Mall, though, that's the thing.
Right, but with that one as well, you know, you can step back and say, okay, it's, if you put it in yourself, you're not paying the fee. So, where you're talking about a good general contractor can get thrown in, hey, show us the sidewalk, and we're not going to charge you the fee. Because I could see with the way projects grow, there's always scope creep, there's always overruns, you probably wouldn't want to charge the fee upfront. You'd want to see what they really did, and then at the end of the project, say, okay...
So, basically, the consensus is we want the private sector to pay for the public sidewalks. Is that what I'm hearing from everybody?
I still think there's more... I can tell you the sidewalk around Oakwood Mall would be on private property. Oakwood Mall and the owner of Oakwood Mall would own all that property, so it would be the private business paying for their private sidewalk.
But there again, you...
But the city would be the one requiring the sidewalk.
Correct. Just like we do with any other ordinance in terms of how you're going to put your utilities inside of your home, or how we code your house, and how the level in which you make sure your house is safe in terms of navigating.
Yeah, like having sprinklers.
So, we have, so we have a public sidewalk on a private piece of property, so then the private citizen...
How was the sidewalk, again, the onus on the owner in order to be able to put a sidewalk on their property, so their property can be navigated safely when they have a high level of traffic that's going through there? This is simply a safety issue for that area. It also brings the ability to be able to navigate the property for any type of commercial use, for individuals walking back and forth from area to area. This, I mean, this literally happens across the country all the time, for private property owners to put in their sidewalks inside their inner homes. If you were to put in a new home, it would be the same thing, put a sidewalk, and anybody in the neighborhood could walk on that sidewalk. I mean, I honestly don't, I don't see the difference.
Well, and we can still bring...
But usually, that's in the easement. Usually, those sidewalks are in the city's easement.
But it's still required by...
If we force it to be pushed into the private property, then the private individual or the business takes responsibility for the liability, for the maintenance.
So, take, so take Oakwood for an example. If we're talking about what would be required in terms of a sidewalk around Oakwood Mall, are we looking at the grassy areas? Are we talking about somewhere paved over the asphalt? Just to follow the example that was given, I'm trying to figure out where...
Long Oakwood.
I would think it would be a long...
Long Oakwood would be a long area, yeah.
In the, in the grassy area that...
And then you have entrances or whatever, so...
So, that would be in the easement.
Right.
So, I...
If it was in the easement, yes.
And then that would be a partnership where the city is responsible for maintaining it.
Yeah.
It's a one-off fee.
I have a question on that, since I just came in late. How does the city of Enid compare with Stillwater, Salina, Kansas, the other cities?
That was asked a few months ago.
That's a study I want to see. I want to make sure that we don't...
That we are comparable to other cities, because what I've been seeing, our sidewalk rules are way too stringent. They're almost as stringent as a street as far as specs.
I'm sure...
I mean, compared to other cities, what I see, they're doing their sidewalks, and I drive through other cities, I try to pay attention. And I think the cities themselves is like maybe collecting a fee, and then they go out and they do a sidewalk, because there's all businesses that are grandfathered in, and they have to connect that.
Every municipality has its own budget and a budgetary process, and that changes with the commission that's in charge of making those allocations. What I'm trying to get a perspective on is to make sure we keep Enid competitive with peer communities, and that we're in a position that we have identified those areas where growth is going to occur, where we actually need those sidewalks, we don't build a sidewalk to nowhere.
Exactly.
And so, in that, I want to, go ahead.
City of Enid, that I hear from other people, is the hardest city to work with. You can talk to ag lenders, not ag lenders, but like Oaktree Lending, if they got to do lending on a house in this town, it's very hard to work with. And I hear it from different people, I've traveled other cities, and I say, and I'll ask them, I say, well, how is it doing business in Enid? Very tough, dealing with the city on ordinances. Isn't it just sidewalk? It's everything.
Every city has to make allocations of priorities. And I know that we had this comprehensive study that was adopted, what, two years ago? Is that correct? Are there abouts?
Pretty close, pretty close.
So, this map, does this mirror the comprehensive study of where we need to provide public benefit and sidewalks?
Nope.
It does not?
Well, this is what's done, so, I mean...
I mean, part of what I think needs to occur is you need to have this consensus of, these are the areas where we're going to have projects that will be well-served by commercial locations that should be walkable. There are areas, just as we've indicated, industrial, certain industrial areas, agricultural areas, that's not going to happen. But anyone coming into the community that looks at attractive real estate on O&amp;K Gharriat needs to understand, if they purchase, or they're going to be a part of that process and they pay into it, or they're going to be responsible to make sure that it fits what the city wants to occur. Very important that we don't lose a consensus of the big picture as commissions change, as finances get tighter, as to how the reallocations occur. And I think the institutional wisdom will allow that, and likely has. I mean, we look at, we've had times that we've been very short on funding. Presently, we think, and I didn't come in in time, do we have a budget set up and allocated for sidewalks generally?
I don't think so, sir. It's only like $50,000 for sidewalk partnership program, $25,000 for commercial and residential.
I heard a $300,000 figure as I walked in. What was that?
That is an ADA program.
ADA.
And that's why the sidewalks have, are the specs in which they are. Why we don't vary in terms of side and wideness and thickness is because those sidewalks, the way that we put them in, have to be ADA compliant. That's why there's no variation on them.
And the city has to be in a position that we're creative in qualifying the city for funding that exists, the trail plan, we've done a very good job of picking up those funds, and that helped us take the sidewalk, the trails east. And we need to think about what are the areas that are walkable, and that people will use them, and get the maximum benefit and safety. Ultimately, we're talking about commercial areas, but we have to have a focus. And I suppose, I, the east-west transit Willow, O&amp;K, somewhere in the center possibly, I always look at Randolph as being one of those areas that looks like it ought to have some, some sense of urgency.
I would concur that there's probably more pedestrian traffic on Randolph than on Gharriat.
You know, I oftentimes think, when I send people to the west side of Enid from my office, and I want to find the most appealing direction, or send them out to have lunch, I just had someone not long ago, and you pause as, I want to take them so that I can find what appears to be an appropriate, appropriate transit, so they recognize that we're a progressive, productive city. We have some areas that certainly need attention. Say, go out on a particular route, you need to be careful if you're not on Willow or O&amp;K Gharriat, they may get the wrong impression the first trip.
So, the term was thrown out, a cost share program. So, it sounds like there is something there that if money was raised, then maybe the business could come and get help or assistance, but tell us more about what the program is.
This is for an existing sidewalks.
It's for existing sidewalks, yeah.
So, that's if the sidewalk's in disrepair or needs to be altered in some way, like...
That's correct, that's correct, yeah.
Is there any, is there any budget for, we'll go back to Swadleys as an example, if we need the city to do some engineering, is there anything in the budget for that?
I don't think so.
So, what about the option of an improvement district, just as was adopted in downtown for a mile of O&amp;K Gharriat? What does it take in order to adopt that kind of plan? That's a part of your abdolaram taxation then for the 10 years or whatever term you pick up, and the owners all contribute, it's part of your tax bill. You own the property, you pay your proportionate part of the taxes. What's it take to get that set up? Is it a 50%? Half, half the owners have to say, yes, this is good? And if you don't get 50%, then we...
No, it might be 51, but it's 50 or 51.
Have we had any, any history of establishing those other than in the downtown for sidewalks?
It's been a long time. I mean, it has not happened recently. It may, there may be sidewalks, you know, back in the 30s, 40s, 50s or something on the east side of town were put in, because you can use, you can use the assessment district for sidewalks, for streets, for water, or sewer, you know. But it, we haven't done it recently.
What about putting sidewalks within, and counting the sidewalks within a development versus just strictly putting them right on the street? An example would be the LaHoma Courts thing coming up. If we could direct traffic through that development versus having people right there on the roadway, is that something that we could consider as well?
Sure. Yes, you could, you could put sidewalks. Now, if it's sidewalks not on the right-of-way, then, and I do think we're considering LaHoma Court having sidewalks, then it would probably be the property owner who would be responsible for keeping it, but that would, it doesn't have to run on...
Okay, that could be an option then.
Yeah, and it might be safer than, you know, if you had connecting sidewalks that meandered...
Yeah, some of these sidewalks are like getting real close to the road, so that's another concern I have.
Yeah.
If you look at the Udothe Square, for instance, I mean, that's...
It's a lifestyle center, yeah.
Very swanky, yes. Okay.
I would, I would suggest perhaps that we kind of take a break. We've got 15 minutes until our normal meeting. If everybody's okay with that, I would say let's adjourn for 15 minutes, and I don't think we're going to solve all the world's problems tonight, but I think we definitely have made a whole lot of progress, and I think we're getting closer to being able to give Carol some, some, some to work with. So, let's adjourn, sorry.
Spencer, is it, like, you guys did an excellent job with the map this session. Could we have some kind of comps for other cities that are our size for next time to look at? You know, yes, you mentioned Salina.
Salina, Kansas has a less tax than we've had in the last several years.
Just to see the whole range.
Same herbaceous, they've turned their herbaceous into factories. Here's a good.
Yeah.
So, wouldn't we do a plan with sidewalks in the... Just making it a walkable?
Well, yeah, and...
And that's what really the...
And the other thing is the neighbors want it, they want a walk.
Sure.
That's what they want, and so, nobody has a problem with it.
Sometimes you have existed, kind of superimposed these kinds of projects, various exist, and very challenging, and it's about safety and...
Carol, in a case like that, if you boldly went after creating one of those districts, you mentioned 50% or 50 plus 1% of owners or tenants or...
You'd have to talk to the...
Property owners.
Some of those get shifted back to tenants and...
And it's 50% by acreage, not 50% by number of owners.
If I had three acres, I get the equivalency of three votes. If she's got two acres...
It's a pro-rata.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But it's big.
Thank you for joining us for the Enid Metropolitan Area Planning Commission meeting. All meetings are broadcast on local cable channel 12 and in high-definition, channel 112. In addition, this meeting is live-streamed on the web at enidtv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the city of Enid website at enid.org.